Please rise over the, uh, with the lunettes.
Goodbye, all United States of America, and sacred knowledge, for just fans, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts.
Mr. Brown, would you like to introduce our, our second senator?
It's coming across, Tim. Yeah, I get the interview started somewhere. Well, this is a special treat for us. I had the opportunity, uh, as board members do, we kind of sneak around to different activities and enjoy ourselves. And, uh, I went to a, uh, McLaurin's basketball game, uh, ladies' basketball game when I was watching it, and there was gonna be another basketball game going on, so I decided to hang out for that for a while. Uh, prior to the game starting, three, uh, ladies came out and sang acapella, uh, a particular song which I think we all rather love, and, uh, they did just an absolutely fantastic job. And I've been trying to get them to one of our board meetings for a couple of months, and we've succeeded. And so I have Janey Mosley, Mariah Green, and Brittany Holloway. Now, they are all sophomores at McLaurin's. And would all of us, ladies and gentlemen, please rise for the next one.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to McLaurin's High School in the May 14th, Board of Education. Adoption of Agenda for Regular Meeting. Under provisions of Missouri, uh, meeting law of the State of Missouri, Board of Education must adopt by roll call vote, an agenda that includes date, time, place, and tentative agenda for the meeting. A copy of the notice and agenda for this meeting was posted on Monday, May 11, 2015, at the Administration Center, 1005 Waterford Drive, Florence, Missouri. At the same time, copies of the notice and agenda were mailed to major radio and television stations, to four newspapers, to all municipalities, schools in the district, and posted on the district website. So I have a motion to adopt the agenda for regular meeting.
I move that we adopt the agenda.
By second. Then moved by Dr. Turner, and second by Mr. Shabow. Ms. Hoxsey. Roll.
Hi.
Mr. Brown.
Hi.
Dr. Grace.
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, Dr. Griffin.
Aye.
President.
Aye.
Secretary goes up.
Motion to adopt the agenda for closed meeting. Section 610.021 of Missouri law provides that for discussion of certain agenda items in a closed meeting. Notice of the proposed closed meeting, including the agenda item to be discussed, was posted. The Board by roll call vote was authorized holding this closed meeting and approved the proposed agenda by reference to each subject to be discussed. The agenda for the closed meeting is legal, section 610.021.1, and personnel, section 610.021.3.
I move we adopt the agenda for the closed session.
Correct.
Then moved by Mr. Shabow, and second by Dr. Turner, to adopt the agenda for closed meeting. Ms. Hoxsey, call her roll.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Dr. Grace.
Aye.
Mr. Shabow.
Aye.
Dr. Griffin.
Aye.
Mr. President.
Aye.
Aye.
Secretary goes up.
Well, we have several, uh, items on the agenda for recognition this evening, so I'll turn it over to Dr. Turner.
Good evening, everyone. Child Development Center voted best, child care in North County. Joy Robinson. I brought our senior staff because I'm really proud of what they've accomplished. Uh, our child development centers were voted best childcare in North County in a poll that was sponsored by the Greater North County Chamber of Commerce. They were selected after receiving the highest number of votes in the childcare category in community news. Uh, they provide childcare for children ages two to five, year round, seven thirty in the morning, seven o'clock in the morning till five in the evening, by thirty in the evening. Um, from two-year-olds to kindergarten entry, accredited through Missouri accreditation. They're really good, and I'm so proud of them. Uh, we have a special program this summer called the Take a Summer Five, where we have five dollar an hour care for short-term care. So, anybody who needs care, give us a call. And thank you so much. You've really done a great job.
Combs Elementary Team wins 2015 Scholar Award. Duchesne Student is first-place individual champion. Sheila Moore, Dr. Moore, please.
Good evening. Uh, Sheila is rocking a bat, so I'll read for this team. Congratulations, Combs Elementary School wins the 2015 Scholar Award competition, and we also have our individual winner, from Duchesne Elementary School. On Saturday, April eight, eh, on Saturday, April 18, students from all seventeen Ferguson Flores' School District Elementary Schools competed in the district's annual Scholar Award competition. The competition consisted of four challenges, one which required students to solve pictures and logic puzzles, two which required competitors to develop winning strategies and strong math skills to win games, and a final challenge in which teams answered academic questions in a Jeopardy-style format. The first-place team for 2015 is a team from Combs Elementary School. The participants were Jordan Moore, Chloe Holston, Nick Ebert, Alex McDowell, Lily Magically, and Julian Strickland, coached by Mr. Gray Waller, and of course, supported by their principal, Tangie Oglesby. The strongest individual player from each of the school teams also competed against one another to quickly and correctly answer academic questions in all curriculum areas. The first-place individual champion for 2015 is Tyler Rilis of the Duchesne Elementary School, coached by Deanna Woodruff, and of course, supported by their principal, Ms. Katie Sanders. Congratulations to all.
Fifteen FFSD students qualified for the state DECA competition. Cole White.
Good evening. Would the DECA sponsors and the principals of the high schools please come forward? And for the, um, DECA students, when I call your name, would you please come forward and here and stand? After successfully competing in individual competition, fifteen students from McLaurin High School, McLaurin South Berkeley High School, and McLaurin North High School participated in the state DECA competition this spring. DECA is an international organization that prepares emerging leaders and entrepreneurs in marketing, finance, hospitality management, and other business areas. From McLaurin High School, sponsored by Mr. Tim Lady, students are Celine Wallace and Destiny Speech, who competed in travel and tourism, team decision-making, and Asia Bargner, who competed in food marketing individual series. Congratulations. McLaurin South Berkeley High School students Kennedy Reed and Raphael Haynes competed in travel and tourism, this team decision-making. Congratulations. And McLaurin South Berkeley sponsor for DECA is, is Dr. Rahim Mohammed. And the McLaurin North students competed. Tobo Yorikoko Kuko in marketing management, Stephanie Brown Young and Tatiana Turner, hospitality services, team decision-making; Kiara Clemmons, principals of business management administration; Ben Pascoe, retail merchandising series; Tralisa Harris, restaurant and food service management; Gabriel Hayes and Tyra Cerci, marketing communications, team decision-making; Michael Podge, automotive services marketing; and Kobe Tank, restaurant and food service management. And the McLaurin North DECA club is sponsored by Mr. Jake Plitinsky. And Jake, I believe you also had one of your students who qualified for the national DECA competition that recently just happened. So Tobo from McLaurin North, who, um, was the district vice president of the DECA organization in Missouri, has also qualified for the national competition, which just happened recently in Orlando, two weeks ago. So congratulations again. And certainly, congratulations to all our DECA finalists. If you want to squeeze together so we can get your picture, that would be wonderful.
Three FFSD sophomores selected for 2015 Missouri Scholars Academy. Cole White.
And students, when I call your name, would you please come forward and here and stand? You recognize as well. Three Ferguson Flores' School District sophomores have been selected to attend the 2015 Missouri Scholars Academy, otherwise known as MSA. Will Bunk and Griffin Jones, who attended McLaurin North High School, and Michaela Davis, who attends McLaurin High School, all three will attend a three-week residential program to be held June 7 through June 27 on the campus of the University of Missouri in Columbia. They are among the 330 Missouri students selected to attend this prestigious academy. Congratulations. And Miss Fox, would you please come forward as well? I'm not sure if any of our missing names here. You want to take their certificates, that would be wonderful. And I'd like to just say, more and forward, C is the social coordinator. He coordinates with the schools for all the application process, um, for the Missouri Scholars Academy as well.
Fourteen FFSD students selected for a student at McLaurin South Berkeley, send your name to Rams Golden Horn Elite, Steve Lawler. Did I step on him? Okay, I see one. Fourteen FFSD students selected from Missouri Fine Arts Academy, incident, Cole White.
And Doug Urban is the, um, Missouri Fine Arts Academy. Courtney, come down and read the work.
Mine is forty, or the first one is it? So, um, just to explain a little bit about the program. Missouri Fine Arts Academy's been going on for the past twenty-five years. It's the top two hundred students in grades ten and eleven in each of the arts disciplines. So fifth year selected in instrumental music, visual arts, vocal music, and theater. This is the fourth year in a row where Flores have the most students selected in the entire swing out of all Missouri's. And so, you're gonna need students to come forward along with their parents, and if you're not ready to teach them, they have to be here. Um, so from McLaurin North, in vocal music, we have Dennis Barber, Val Burton, Mariah Hamilton, Olivia Jones, Tyra Long, Ortiz Marie, Johnson Patterson, and Michaela Smith. In theater, Troy Caldwell Day and Leah Sutherland. From McLaurin High School in theater, Rachel Lieford and Deanna Johnson. In band, Kayla Straight. And from McLaurin South Berkeley in band, St. Kaya Young. One of our programs, each student can get a renewable three-hour college challenge through state every semester they are enrolled.
Congratulations to our Missouri Fine Arts Academy students.
McLaurin South Berkeley, send your name to Rams Golden Horn Elite, and so.
Savan Clark, a senior outside linebacker with McLaurin South Berkeley Bulldogs football team, has been named to the St. Louis Rams 2015 Golden Horn Elite Twenty-Five Football Team. The team consists of the top twenty-five players in the St. Louis Metropolitan Area. During the 2014 season, Clark was named to Missouri Football Coaches Association, Class Three All-State Thirteen, and First Team All-Conference, and recognized as the conference Defensive Player of the Year. Clark, other Golden Horn Elite Twenty-Five Football Team honoree, is to be recognized at the National Football Foundation. St. Louis Tom Lombardo's chapter by this month, and Savan is happy to announce he is going to, which college? Illinois State.
McLaurin students receive UMSO Creative Achievement Awards, Jane Crawford.
Good evening. McLaurin juniors Jeremia Collins, De'Nia Tebukini, and Alex Jefferson received the University of Missouri St. Louis Dean's Award for Creative Achievement in the Arts, if monthly. The annual award, which provides a thousand-dollar creative achievement scholarship to attend UMSO, recognized juniors to display outstanding talent, leadership, and responsibility in one or more of their school arts programs. The students were honored during a special awards luncheon this spring at the university. Congratulations.
They were all three there.
McLaurin students take top honors in the Congressional Art Competition.
McLaurin High School seniors Joyce Hal and Taylor Coleman Donato received top honors in the fifteenth annual Congressional Art Competition. Hal placed first for her painting, Mrs. Titwell, and Donato placed third for her drawing, Perception of Fortune. The competition hosted by Congressman Lacy Clay is a jury show for high school students in the first congressional district. As the winner of the competition, Hal's painting will be on display at the Capitol in Washington DC for the next year. Taylor's drawing will be on display in Congressman Clay's office in St. Louis for the next year. This is a back-to-back win for McLaurin High School, and 2014, We Can't Let Them Bell Settle, won first place in the competition for her charcoal display, which has been up in Washington DC since June of 2014.
McLaurin art students selected to 2015 Valley of Flowers Queen, special, and special maids. Cole White.
When I call your name, would the students would please come forward and here and stand? McLaurin North Junior Courtney Nysner was crowned Valley of Flowers Queen, and Miss Val Burton, Miss Warren Everett, and Special Maids on Queen's Court in the ceremony in the Valley of Flowers Festival on Sunday, May 3. The three McLaurin North students were selected among sixteen high school juniors from seven area schools to serve on this year's court. Miss Nysner was sponsored by North Conic Churches United, United for Racial Harmony and Justice. Miss Burton was sponsored by FGG Trucking, and Miss Everett was sponsored by Old Town Motors. Burton, Everett, and Nysner were among nine students from McLaurin North to seek the crown as queen candidates this year, the most candidates of any North County school. Congratulations. With North County Churches United, Racial Justice, and who's one of the leading sponsors for Arcadia.
McLaurin North Senior Ayesha Wahidi selected as 2015 Gates Millennium Scholar.
McLaurin North Senior Ayesha Wahidi has been named a 2015 Gates Millennium Scholar. This is a big deal. It's just, I used to have tissue here when I read this because it brings tears to my eyes. Um, this Wahidi was selected for more than fifty-seven thousand applicants, were one of the one thousand. So again, she was selected for one of the one thousand Gates Millennium Scholarships given this year in recognition for her strong leadership, community service, and academic achievements. The Gates Scholarship will allow Ayesha to attend the accredited college or university in the United States of her choice, and the scholarship may be renewed each year. In addition, if she chooses to pursue graduate studies in the field of computer science, education, engineering, library science, mathematics, public health, or science, she may be eligible for the Gates Fellowship funding for her education through her masters and doctoral levels. Miss Wahidi is our district's ninth Gates Millennium Scholarship recipient, and continues our proud tradition of graduating highly-achieved students who have gone on to attend some of our nation's most prestigious institutions of higher learning. This is the second Gates Millennium Scholarship that has been received by a student at McLaurin North. The first was Catherine Vanover in 2000. Congratulations. Where do you plan to go to school? Bell River University in Louisville, Kentucky? And what do you plan to study? Education. Excellent. The number of hours that is spent on the Gates Millennium application, I mean, I wouldn't say it's even twenty-plus hours. It is a very rigorous process in terms of the letters recommendation. So again, we are so proud of you, and, uh, and our mom is proud too. are so proud of you, and the mom is proud too. We appreciate all her support throughout the years for Ayesha, and congratulations, and we look forward to hearing about your studies and your outcomes. Thank you.
Well, congratulations again to all the recipients this evening. Did a great job, but just goes to show Ferguson Forest is a great place to get education. Board Strategic Plan update. This portion of the meeting is allocated to the board to provide an update of current activities and events in the district that may be of special interest to board members and to be... Start with our newest member, Dr. Graves.
Good evening, everyone. My first thirty days on the board has been filled with wonderful achievements by our students. I had the pleasure of witnessing some of our greatest students participate in Judge 21 and Van Kala at our district's Scholar Bowl. I went inside the Bubba Planetaryum at the STEM Expo hosted by McLaurin South Berkeley. I was able to attend the First Ferguson Youth Initiative banquet where students like Brandon from McLaurin received an award for his community service in the city of Ferguson, as well as hear the importance of reading and being mentors for our youth from the keynote speaker, our very own Dr. Davis. I had the pleasure of sitting with McLaurin North's Mary Scott and Melissa and McLaurin North's student Deanna, who spoke at our last board meeting at the NCCU Youth Appreciation Dinner. I attended the Senior National Honor Society Program at McLaurin where our seniors shared information about what colleges they're planning to attend, and they shared their most important principles, be it scholarship, leadership, service, or justice. I had the opportunity to get to meet incoming parents of our district and provide pointers on staying an involved parent at Hallsberry Elementary School, a kindergarten roundup. I enjoyed the sounds of the seventh and eighth grade band students at Cross Keys. I must admit, I was very impressed. I attended Queenie Park and saw some of our first-place students' science projects across many of our schools in our district. I celebrated the excellence of students at McLaurin South Berkeley High School and got to hear Captain Johnson speak about bringing our community together. Last night, I was entertained by two hundred or more talented, creative, outgoing, amazing students of our district at Celebrate Children. In addition, I have had the pleasure of meeting more students, teachers, administrators, and parents of our district. I have been very busy.
Thank you. You have had a busy month. Mr. Graves.
Okay. As Dr. Graves said, it's been a busy month, but a great month. Got to spend a lot of time with the kids, and that's what really makes me horny. I'll run through my list as quick as I can here. Scholar Bowl, again, I encourage anybody to make it up there. It's not just an event... I mean, not just for the kids that are competing, I mean, it was amazing what I learned and the encouragement that you could show all the kids there. I truly, truly believe everybody's a winner at that event, and that was one of the best times I've had, so I encouraged Scholar Bowl, of course. A lot of people thought maybe the fix was in because my old-school combs, my son Nicholas was on that team. I will say that, you know, more than being a board member, my most important job is wearing my dad hat, and I just have to say that I'm proud of all the kids, but I'm extremely, extremely proud of my son Nicholas, who really, I am honored to be his father, so I want Nicholas to know that. For other events, now, Rob, I'm gonna need some help with this, but we, Rob and I went to the, what's it, the Education Foundation? Is that... Okay, great. And Turdd SSD, this is the Marriott West, and watching kids, do you think? Fifty? And they got all kinds of scholarships from people to continue their education, and it was one of the most moving events I've seen. As they had their awards, I mean, they came up teary-eyed, they all pretty much had to give speeches, which was kind of cool, so that was just a great event there. Went to, I always get this wrong, so I'm gonna read it here, the North County Churches United for Racial Harmony and Justice, which Dr. Vance Thomas, would you please stand? I want everybody to see this man. And you would never imagine, and I'll tell you what, I always say this, I'm gonna say it every time I get the opportunity, I long to be what you are in my future years. I mean, the kids that got scholarships that day and got awards, I mean, it's just an amazing event. Everybody, happy event, and you really see that we're doing something right up here in North County and Ferguson Forest. All those kids were just great, and I really applaud you for the, like you say every year, you could always award more, you know, so thanks again. Fun event, a lot of fun events. The Renaissance Hotel, I got to see the Holman Art display at Renaissance Hotel, and I don't know if Miss Otto's here, but I'll tell you what, that was neat. She, you know, again, we always talk about building relationships in the community, well, she's built a relationship with one of the managers or the manager at the hotel. So he agreed to put the art from Holman Elementary School on display in the hotel, and then had like a, oh, I don't know, kind of a pseudo art fair there with the kids dressing up, and they had champagne classes with like lemonade in it and cookies and cheese and things like that. It was really, really cool, so I think I want to applaud her for being able to make such great connection for that school and those kids, and again, you could tell they weren't used to events like that, so that was neat too. Got to hear the seventh-grade choir at Cross Keys and teacher, Mr. Meyer. That was so neat because, you know, you go there, you don't know what to expect, but these kids were really awesome, and the crowd got so whipped up, they asked for an encore. And Mr. Meyer afterward said, "That's the first time in all the years of doing seventh-grade choir that he was asked for an encore." He's running around trying to figure out another song to play. That was neat. That was neat. I agree with Courtney. Last night, I saw Courtney at Celebrate Children, just, do you remember how many kids Courtney was over? About 200? Your son was there, right?
Yes.
And it was outstanding, great show, just a great show. And we got some things coming up, the retirement dinner Friday night, and of course graduation, which, what is graduation? One until about eight? One to nine? Okay, so we've got a lot of things going on here, and we're trying to represent the community as best we can, so thank you very much. Mr. Brown?
Well, I have not been as busy this busy as Courtney, and I did go, however, to the National School Board Association Annual Conference in Nashville, and spent some time there with Paul Morrison myself. Also, I attended the National Honor Society Graduate Program for McLaurin this last Wednesday, and my two colleagues, Dr. Thurman, Dr. Graves were there, and I came in and was all prepared to them and enjoy it. They set me up, and I was supposed to speak to them, of course, and they were quite proud of themselves, and I just want you to know that I will get even. And it was great, finally, they enjoyed themselves at my expense, which I deserve. So anyway, having said that, I have not been busy this month, and I have a very good reason, and that is because my daughter presented me with my first grandson, and I have been very busy doing things that I never thought I would do. And not only has it been a great learning experience for me, it is a very awesome experience, and I just absolutely tickle in heaven. Thank you.
So when I started this evening, I was thinking, God, I didn't do anything this last month. And then I started looking at my calendar and making little notes, and it was actually quite busy. Ferguson Youth Initiative Dinner was a fantastic turnout, raised thousands of dollars for our local youth. Scout Bowl competition, was able to spend a couple hours there. I was not able to be there for the final results, but apparently it spoke. And then I also understand that Dr. Blain got a little excited when Holmes won, so much should be in control. Something about jumping up and down. The award recognition dinner for the North County Churches United for Racial Harmony was absolutely fantastic. I was really pleased I was able to attend that. Honor Society induction at Ferguson Middle School, and for us, the kids in the district can actually get quite challenging for being pulled through on events from our kids, but it's actually a great first feeling, get out there in the other schools as well and see so much recognition and the hard work that's been going on. I think the highlight for me really was the Education Foundation, the special school district. These are kids who have faced great challenges from the moment they're born, and they fight every day, and they struggle, and it's amazing what somebody can accomplish by having a good support circle around them, but just through hard work as well. These are kids who wouldn't talk, who would just kind of stand in the corner, who wouldn't interact with anybody, who were very aggressive at times. To see them shine like this and come out of their shell and be recognized for their achievements, and now it was a very beautiful ceremony to attend. The Ferguson Fourth of July Committee has asked me to make a couple announcements that they are looking for participants for the Fourth of July parade in Ferguson, so if your schools, PTO, band, if you just want to put a float together, by all means, they are looking for participants for that. They're also having a Youth Achievement Award that they give out. It's a monetary award for high school students who must be a Ferguson resident, but it's a monetary award, I think it's $250. Dr. LaRue has the application, they're gonna send that out, but I also have applications up here, so after recess, everyone can come up and pick one up for your child or a friend of yours or anybody, by all means, I encourage that. They usually have a very low turnout of people seeking this award, so we're trying to spread the word for it, so beyond that, thank you very much.
I'm just going to mention that things they haven't already been mentioned, and I want to remind everybody, I've already signed this up for the Fourth of July parade, so if it came in the mail, we're all ready to go. Rob, Paul, and I attended the North County, it's not Incorporated, what was that, different area? And we received an award for being members for 50 years. Greater North County Chamber of Fame, you gentlemen. So we've been active members for 50 years, so we represented the board at that time. Earth Day, I got to spend the morning at Little Creek and enjoyed it immensely. We had several exhibits. It kind of amazed me because I'd been on farms as a child and seeing how excited the kids get, eating the chickens and the whole thing, and then we had several things that the children could do that was very entertaining and fun for them, so that was a fun morning. But an idea popped into my head, Laura, and I really wanted to see us do a run next year because it was for Earth Day, so let's do fitness for the earth and our wellness, and maybe run for the administration building in Little Creek, do something. That would be a nice day to celebrate Earth Day as well as celebrating our own wellness, so I'm popping that out right now. Yeah. I'll walk it. Can I sit my surrogate and let him do it? No, sorry. That's cheating. Okay, well, I'm not gonna cheat. I do have a report, I'm on the HR portion of the strategic plan, and following this year's successful negotiations between the school district and between the FFMDA Human Resources Department has updated and distributed contracts for approximately 800 certified staff and notices of employment for over 1,300 educational support staff. Job descriptions for extra pay positions are being updated in preparation for the 2015-16 school year. The department distributed notices to coaches and sponsors asking for their intent to return for the 15-16 school year. This has enabled us to put 291 resignations of rehire on tonight's consist agenda. With tonight's approval, this will allow us to distribute extra pay contracts two months soon to previous years. Annual submission of core data to the Missouri Department of Elementary Secondary Education is completed. All of this FFSD teachers were rated highly qualified to teach the course which they are assigned. This was our first year to submit data for the new Tyler Human Resources Management System. An upgrade to School Stream is underway. School Stream is our form of management and applicant tracking system. Once updated, Teacher Fit and Administrator Fit, our new teacher and administrator talent screen, will be integrated into it. Seven of 11 administrative hires have been completed, including several who we introduced this evening. In the past year, the Ferguson Forest and School District has hosted 103 student teachers, two administrative internships, four school psychologists, practicums, two field placements, and 217 requests for observations. This total of 324 placements puts free-service teachers in classrooms and gives the district an opportunity to have a first vote at prospective teacher candidates applying to universities. We are working with the University of Missouri St. Louis to expand their studio school program to include all three of our high schools. This collaborating partnership places free-service teachers in schools to work with teacher teams for practical experience and professional development. On the days they are not in classes, many free-service teachers are also substitute teachers for our district. During the past year, as disciplinary personnel incidents have occurred and have been resolved, data regarding each incident has been tracked to determine if certain departments or locations might benefit. might benefit from employment in service. We have seventy-three teaching positions available, twenty-six have been filled and they are filling three to five positions daily. And eleven administrative positions with seven principals, two middle schools, and three high school assistant principals. The one with four north principal is still vacant, position is still vacant, and four other administrative positions with three still pending. So that sounds like Dr. McMillan and the HR department have been very busy and we thank everyone for what they've done.
Thank you. Dr. Thurman?
Hello, everyone. It's good to be back, I've been gone for a couple of months. I had major back surgery, so to sit me dancing in my seat is only because I'm trying to avoid a muscle spasm, so just, just wanted to let you know, but I will tell you that since I've been able to get out a little bit, I've been trying to catch up with Courtney and keep up with her, so I will let you know what I've done and this, this month, Scholar Bowl, and I won't go into a whole lot of details, but I attended the Scholar Bowl for a short period and then I also attended the North County Churches United, Racial Harmony, their eighth annual youth appreciation dinner. I went to the McClure, McClure High School Senior Recognition for National Honor Society. I told you, it's always wonderful to go and to recognize the students who are doing well in school. I also was able to attend the community at McClure High School and that was really neat. It was sponsored by the Craft Alliance Center of Arts and Design and the students made tea cups, little tea cups, and they had a big tea for all the students who worked on the project and the students in McClure and for other people who came to visit and to, to look at the small tea cups that they made. It's really fascinating. Got a chance to go up to celebrate children during the daytime and I was just getting off of what can be done with two hundred children at one time on the stage. I will also say that the people who work with this, who celebrate children, who do the work behind the scenes, we really need to make sure we appreciate them and the work that they do, as well as the students and the banners. It is a sacrifice for the students to go and practice at like seven thirty in the mornings, I think they go for the practices, yes, it's really, really, it's, it's a star in our, in our cap here at the Ferguson Forest School District. I also went to a celebration of excellence here, it was a awards ceremony for students here and of course at Berkeley on Thursday and again outstanding students and students making all kinds of good choices. Was able to also attend the Missouri School Board Spring Regional Meeting and got a lot of information about what's going on with the Ferguson School Board. I went to the blood sad, um, well, I went to a funeral of one of our former students and I wanted to honor her because she came, she graduated from Berkeley High School in nineteen ninety-six and this student was an outstanding student, very known to pass where she passed away in childbirth. You don't hear a lot about that, name was Kimberly Diane Stewart, some of you may know her from Berkeley, but all of the things that she did when she was here, this used to be Berkeley over, or, yeah, before they, before the school was, was building here, but all of the things that she was involved in and not, not to mention she was recognized at state track and state Orange Berkeley contest and she made several class A, three A Missouri State gold medal running. She did so many things at Berkeley High School and then she went on to become a diversity purer specialist at Kentucky University. That's people who are coming from our school district and doing something to make a difference. So I just wanted to honor her tonight. When going to a funeral, the one thing that, that stood out to me, it was, we could not get people in the church, there were so many people, okay, to see her because they know the impact that she made on their lives and also the impact that she made on people here. There were so many Berkeley, I mean Ferguson Forest and School District people there to honor her. So again, I just wanted to be in this building at this time and knowing that she attended Berkeley High School and to know the impact that she's left on so many of us and the great work that she did for, for the district. She made us feel good, so I just wanted to honor her tonight by recognizing her name.
First, I'd like to congratulate Nicholas on his team's win in Scholar Bowl. Nicholas is my assistant chef when I'm cooking sometimes and he likes to, he likes to cook as well, so he's a great kid, congratulations. Also want to make a motion to double the pay of that into the table. They were very busy this month, much busier than I was, so you all got a pay raise, how's that? All right, I did attend the North County Road Committee Chamber Sixtyth Anniversary Dinner, that was a very nice event and as well as the Ferguson Youth Initiative Dinner this month. That is about all I did. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Germaine, I think he was next.
Good evening, Board, Dr. LaRue, fellow of Ferguson Forest members and stakeholders. Before I begin, please allow me to introduce to you the FFMEA president for the 2015-2016 school year, Rory Sanderson. As a community, we've experienced the tragedy and resulting action that has placed the asset world upon us. As a school district, we've completed the morbid task in the search for a superintendent, one of which we had to choose between Dr. Davis and Dr. Davis. In case you didn't hear, Dr. Davis walked. Welcome, Dr. Davis. As for the FFMEA, as business as usual, we save jobs, foster youth members, and set members around the country for leadership training and development on local, state, and national levels. There were negotiations, evaluations, irons, vires, all types of rumors, and of course discipline issues, everything that goes on in a typical school year. We hope to spread the word and hopefully had an impact on the successful passage of Prop S and Prop I. We even endorsed the triple candidate school board. Who are we? We are the National Education Association. We educate America, which means we educate your children, your grandchildren, your nieces, nephews, brothers, sisters, foster kids, and cousins. We work tirelessly for your children. Many of us pay hundreds of dollars out of our pockets to equip classrooms, buy supplies, sometimes feeding hungry children. Many work for little pay and no benefits. We hope that children get jobs and get them into schools beyond further form. Being an educator is difficult, sometimes a thankless job, but we do it for the students of this district. We don't ever campaign against a candidate, so we are not the enemy. Like everyone in this room, we want the best for Ferguson Forest. I would like that we would share our energies to encourage voter registration and increase voter turnout. This past year, we had tremendous voter turnout, but watching controversy have to appear on our doorstep in order to get the community out into the polls. Last year, it was our boy, this year it's Michael Brown. Without a galvanized vote of voting, will voter turnout be strong next year? Let us pray that the next year can be a normal and peaceful school year where marches are full parades, signs for traffic, and fires of burning charcoal, not businesses. Last year, I said we must all make a commitment. I also said, don't believe us, just watch. Have we done enough yet to make them believers? Are they still watching? It's been honored to come before you this year to report association activity as FFMEA president. I would like to thank the Board of Education, the Ferguson Forest School District, in particular Dr. LaRue, and the support of my FFMEA family for making this a truly stimulating year. This president, this concludes my final report for the board. Thank you all.
I want to thank Frank personally for being present, I know, I know what a tough job it is, the number of hours you put in, and you get the same pay that we get and I really appreciate all the work that you've done this past year, thank you very much. Thank you very much. Mr. President, I'd like to hand it, he actually, you know, last night celebrated children, I recognize him, he narrated that and, and I said, you know, I told him tonight, I said, you've got that career, you don't have a man, he's got another career if he wants it, that James Earl Jones thing going on, so anyway, Frank, you did a great job, thanks. I'll try it one more time. The items that were already stated concerning the staff retirement dinner, graduation, obviously the last day of school on May twenty-ninth, as with, you know, that time of the year, we, we wrap things up, but to wrap things up, we have to finish strong. People need to, you know, students, staff members need to show up, work hard as they have throughout the school year, realize that can be interpreted as, you know, who's giving up and no one is, but it's just what we have to do, we have to make sure that we keep plugging away all the way through the last step. I have just one item that I really want to call attention to outside of that, and it's a recognition that we received through the, uh, Regional Business Council that we're going to be receiving a check for summer programs that have been forwarded along to them, will be receiving a check from the Greater St. Louis Community Foundation that will highlight the contribution from Reinvest North County. That check will be in the amount of twenty-nine thousand dollars to support our summer programs. We just wanted to call that to the center's board. Dr. Davis, would you like to make your introductions?
So, good evening, good morning. I've been a little busy this week, uh, in my transitioning from North Carolina to here, so I've got my name in, I've been in quite a few schools, probably at K C, at Dr. Graves'. And so I have a few more to get to, I think there's only five schools I haven't been to hit, but I hear the words, teachers and principals and people in the community who I've been with so far, just really trying to put my hands and I get around all of what's going on in this school district. And I can tell you that I'm even more excited about coming on board and starting this out in July. So I've been transitioning in about a week and a month since I got named that committee here, and one of those tasks involved me coming here in April and going through a new process with some new assistant principals that we brought on to work with 2015-16 school year, as well as a couple of the principals that will join us. So we're pleased to welcome some new administrators that have been appointed by the Board of Education. Now these appointments are part of our risk to continue bringing the best and brightest talent to the Ferguson Forest and School District, providing our children with the highest quality education. And I can tell you how proud I am of all of the students that have come aboard this evening, and I don't want to segue anyone out, but it is a huge accomplishment to say that this school district has over nine eighty-two million scholarships, that is tremendous around this country. So let's get all right to this place. So I'd like to introduce just a few people and if I call your name, would you please understand the side of your side? And I'll give you just a brief introduction of a few of the people that are here with me this evening. These are new administrators for the 2015-16 school year. Previously served as assistant principal at Imagine, Bryan, Mel, Science, and Matix, principal at Imagine Academy of Career Middle Schools and as assistant principal at Central Middle School in Riverview Gardens. He holds a bachelor's degree in elementary education from Harris-Stowe State University, a master's degree in educational administration, as well as an educational specialist degree from Missouri Baptist University. He brings with him a wealth of expertise in school improvement and increasing success for students. He also holds a doctorate in education from Missouri Baptist University. Please welcome the next, one of the next assistant principals at the Florida High School, Dr. Walter Hoppen. Also, he, our next new mentor that previously served as assistant principal at Riverview Gardens High School, and also taught English Language Arts at Riverview Gardens High School as well as schools in Las Vegas. He has a master's degree in English Education, a master's degree in Educational Administration and Principal Certification in Grade Seven through Twelve. He has expertise in professional learning communities, alternative education programs, and a depth of knowledge in E O K. He has been recipient of the Teacher of the Year Award at Riverview Gardens High School and was named as, or rather earned the Thirty Leaders and Their Thirty Award from North County Incorporated. Please welcome our next assistant principal at the Florida High School, Mr. David Arles. Our next administrator previously served as principal at Rockwood South Middle School and as assistant principal at the South Springs Middle School in Rockwood School District. She has also served as middle school and high school guidance counselor and as a local unit teacher. She holds a master's degree in, and master's degree in education from Southeast Missouri State University, a master's degree in secondary counseling from University of Missouri-St. Louis, and a doctorate in educational leadership from Maryville University. Please welcome our next principal of Cross Keys Middle School, Dr. Linda Villa. And the next administrator I'd like to make a quick announcement to you, previously served as a principal and assistant principal in the Hazelwood School District. She held her first teaching position at Cross Keys Middle School as a social studies teacher. Prior to serving as teacher, she worked as a school and community resource she worked as a school and community resource volunteer through the United States Peace Corps in Castle Village, South Appleton, two years. She holds a bachelor's degree in secondary education from Arizona State University, a master's degree in educational administration from St. Louis University, and a doctoral degree in educational administration from Lindenwood University. Please welcome our next principal of Ferguson Middle School, Dr. Katie Chambers. So, as a part of the strategic plan, one of those goals is to bring in talent and continue to support providing our children with the highest quality education. So, I'm pleased to welcome these four new, we have a couple of others that aren't here. I'll recognize them at a later time. But I'm pleased to welcome these next four administrators to the Ferguson Forest School District. So, please join me again and give them a round of applause.
Just want to thank Dr. Davis for introducing them and to let everybody know that Dr. Davis was instrumental in helping select our candidates for principals and assistant principals. He's been very involved already, so thank you for that. Public comments. The Board has allocated this portion of the meeting to allow stakeholders indeed the opportunity to comment on both agenda items and non-agenda items at the start of each board meeting. Prior to the public comment period, participants are asked to fill out a comment card with their name, address, phone number, and email address, and a topic can be addressed. We will be allowed up to three minutes to speak. Members of the audience who wish to speak to the board are requested to speak from the podium, identify themselves, and in keeping with District Policy 4054 and 4059 and personnel law, are refrained from making negative comments that are personally identifiable, or the board will not directly respond to speakers during the public comment period. The board president may make clarifying remarks at the end of the comment session. I'd like to take this opportunity to remind those who wish to make public comments during tonight's board meeting that there be a three-minute time limit in the interest of fairness to all who wish to speak, to address the board, and to adhere to board policy. We must limit all speakers to three minutes, and we will help remind the speakers of those limitations, as science indicates. There's one minute and then 30 seconds remaining in the comment period when speakers' time is up. We ask that everyone cooperate to help us make our meetings as efficient and respectful of everyone's time as possible. Looks like tonight we have, we have three people. Let's get it.
Good evening, board. Good evening, everyone. My name is Archilla Huber. I'm the parent of three children in this district. And first of all, before I even start, I just want to commend the work now that you're doing, but the excellent work of our students. I am just really in awe, Chris, the work that was acknowledged tonight, that you've accomplished, and just everything. This is what it's all about. That is what we're here for. So, I just wanted to celebrate that. This wasn't on my list of ideas to talk about, but I just want to go ahead and mention it. And it is out of no respect. It's not a personal thing at all, but I just want to ask the board to consider that perhaps on the back of the agenda, the items and activities that you all are engaged in every month, that maybe that just be listed on the back of the agenda. And if there's something that you really feel like is pertinent and that you need to call to our attention, such as some of the things that was even brought out this evening, that the time you use to identify those things as opposed to everyone kind of running through what their agenda was for the month, for the sake of time, because the meetings are pretty long as it is and people are coming for work. So, I just ask the board to consider that. I'm also asking for it to consider, I don't know if the district has a policy on music, but there's been a couple of occasions where I've been in the school and I've also attended athletic events where some of the music, which I don't have a problem. I know kids are young. I'm not a problem with just young music, but some of the content is talking about negative things, things that are of sexual nature or implicit. I want us to really be mindful of the fact that these are our kids, and that's not what we're trying to instill in them. So, if we don't have a policy in place, we need to really look at that of what music is being played. Again, some of these things are happening inside the school when the kids are changing classes. I understand they're trying to keep the upbeat and get the kids moving, but we need to be mindful of the type of music that is being allowed to be played. I want to, two other items. The athletic packets that come in the mail every year, it's an 80-page packet, and we're in a situation where many times the kids, at one time, we're even sending paper to the schools for the kids to print off stuff. We've been doing a lot of things to try to eliminate waste and to try to cut back on things. So, I just want to suggest the fact that perhaps we can put this on the website where parents can print off the sheets if they wanted to participate. We can maybe send home maybe just one sheet listing all the dates of all the activities. And if they were interested, they could go onto the website. It costs those 46 cents to mail it, and no telling how much it costs us for the paper and the printing. So, just must consider that. And then lastly, before I take my seat, I would like the board to consider possibly putting in place a parent and community advisory board. A board of parents and people from the community who can assist the board. There is a miss amount of work that is involved with what you have to do to govern, as well as being connected with the parents, the community, what's going on. And I think if we had an advisory board where individuals were able to assist in some of that work and be a liaison, I think it would help our district. So, I'm asking that you consider putting something like that in place. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. How about the next FFNA president, Laura Zappino?
Good evening, board. Very briefly, I just wanted to remind that part of the negotiation package this year was approval of Policy 2020, Appendix A and Appendix B, all dealing with the Curriculum Advisory Council, on CAC, we call it. And I just wanted to kind of respectfully request that maybe the board, when items come forward for curriculum instruction, that maybe the board could help us by asking if those things have gone through CAC and follow the board approved process. Thank you.
Thank you. The current president, Mr. Frank Green.
Hello again. I represent Technology Specialist Zepia Xredkrosch of Ferguson Middle School. In the morning and after, and in the afternoon, where our parents are picking up their children and dropping their children off, it's a mess. In front of the building, people don't stop at stop signs, and one day, there's really going to be a tragedy in front of that building. We request, or at least hope that you would think about maybe putting not stop signs but speed bumps to slow down that traffic. It would, I think that it would save lives. And we would also hope that maybe you would consider a third stop sign at the parking lot so that when the people that are parked, that work there can get out because traffic goes by and there's no one, and they don't stop, there's no stop sign there, to have cars come out of the parking lot for entry. So, we respectfully request that you welcome to the votes and options. Thank you.
Thank you. That is our last group we have this evening. We'll take a 10-minute recess at 8:30 to congratulate and welcome our new administrators and congratulate our students that are still here for the forums and all boards. Consent Agenda. Administration consents the following items for approval under the Consent Agenda. Accept with your hands, first.
Teacher, non-teacher, $8,713.62. Operation Dispersance, $1,971,743.63. With a total of $10,135,135,454.25.
I move we accept the consent agenda.
Sir. Been moved by Mr. Shabo and seconded by Dr. Nerman to accept the consent agenda. All those who say will say aye.
Aye.
Call the same sign. Motion carries. Building on progress, Dr. Avery Klein and Nicole Whitezold.
Good evening. Good evening. Principal Dr. Avery McQuinn from Airport Elementary School and Principal Steve Lawler from McCorr South Berkeley will share unique programs that contribute to the overall success of their school. A PowerPoint on their Accountability Plan update has also been shared with the Board of Education. At this time, I will ask Dr. Carter to come up. She is incredible.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Nicole Agar and Ryan Harries is our executive principal at Airport Richard School. This year has been a year of change. We identified in what areas of growth that we can have a great impact on our, that can have a great impact on our academic achievement. Airport School has adopted the motto, "We are and we will continue." Because that's the most change that is occurring in our building. I'm also very proud to present Leadership Tuesdays at Airport School with Michelle St. Grant class. We're going to go in this order. Randy Doris, Kayla Amos, and Darius Poynter and Michelle. Thank you.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, boys and girls. I want to talk to you about my class and leadership. In my opinion, I think my class is the number one out of the whole school. Every Tuesday, my class has Leadership Tuesday. The girls in my class dress up and look nice. The boys, they dress up and wear a tie. Me and my friends now know how to tie ties. During Leadership Tuesdays, Michelle asks students to teach spelling or math lessons, take our class to the Piddler Lab, or to the cafeteria for lunch. The Leadership Tuesdays help us to understand what it means to be responsible. We know that leaders take care of their community, that they live, and also their school community. We are the future leaders, so we have to start a better tomorrow. My class has a board called Community Service Board. That means every time we give something to campus school, collecting donations, or dress up for Leadership Tuesdays, we get stickers. Michelle is the best teacher in the world. She teaches me different things. I have her for first, third, and that okay, so. She pushes me to learn. If I read my A and A, like she, like my teacher says, I can accomplish my girls' life. It has been my pleasure to speak to you tonight. And thank you, Dr. Carter, for everything you've shown us and what you see is great. Thank you.
My school year, 2014 through 2015. I didn't have like my school year, I would agree. Michelle makes this year so bright. Michelle really cares about her fifth grade class. I've learned so much from her. I'm watching her at the promo because of Michelle. Michelle's an awesome role model. She says I do so much to you that I say, hey, you love me. Today, I got you lunch. Michelle really cares. She spends so much money on us, but that really doesn't matter. What matters is that she loves us. We have good grades because of her A's, B's, and sometimes Cs. We love you, Michelle.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Darius Poynter and I'm a, and I am in fifth grade at Airport Elementary. My teacher name is Michelle. I want to talk about my transfer from Central Elementary to Airport Elementary. I took to Central Elementary from first grade to fourth grade. Then I transferred to Airport in fifth grade. During my time in Central, I was in trouble a lot and was office suspended for flying. When I came to Airport, I got a fresh flight. Nobody knew about my past. This school year, I have not been in trouble at all. It's been a good experience. Michelle has pushed me to try my best, and she believes in me. Reading has always been hard for me, and I just took my star winning and I scored 6.9. I am very proud of myself. My friends at Airport helped me to become successful in life. They are good supporters and do nice things, and we all care about our teacher. Michelle is the best teacher in the school, and I always do doing nice things for us. And I'm very happy that I transferred to Airport. Thank you, Dr. Carter and Michelle, for helping me. Have a great school year.
I have no fight to talk, man. And I'm going to stick with a poem. My future is so bright, not because of the goals I hold, but because of the future leaders in my class. They have dreams to unfold. What makes them dreams? What gives them ambition? Their hard-earned determination. Yes, they are ambition. It's my duty to show them guidance, love, passion, and the way to move forward into the careers of their choice. Listening to them, showing concern, and sharing their voice about the future, about the dreams they write about or share with me. Dreams that all leaders have, so I encourage them to set their dreams free. My students are my future. I know they understand what I expect from them. I am the spark that starts the flame. They are my sunshine on a rainy day and in return, I give it the same. They are our leaders of tomorrow, our decision-makers, our innovators, our trailblazers, our groundbreakers, our pioneers of tomorrow. They are uplifting and inspiring, strengthen their minds and to be creative, to support each other and boost each other, never to let someone fall. And they do what they do. See, this is why my future is so bright. Leaders of tomorrow carry the blaze, the light, within their dreams and focus on education. I know everything in the future is going to be all right. Thank you.
This year, we've increased parental involvement with our self-partners, the Great Circle, Operation Silver Surge, Harris State University, Bobine University, Washington University, St. Louis American, the mayor of Martin City Hall, and other businesses and churches to support the needs of airport families. We're also developing future leaders with programs titled Projects of City to prepare our students to be college and career-ready. We're also building relationships and
We're also building relationships with local universities through the STEM program and those universities are Fox Valley University and Washington University and they work with our fifth grade students. Also, our sixth grade students had an opportunity to take a field trip to Harris State University. During our visit, the students had tour guides that took them around campus to view several sites such as the theater, the dormitory, and the library. Students were able to eat lunch with college students. Students were extremely motivated and excited on the way back to school. They showed an increased desire to attend college after they complete their high school experience. We're also developing voices for leadership. In honor of Black History Month, and we have Ms. Davis here and Ms. Bill Davis and Ms. Amy Free, which they collaborated and put this together. We, our students participated in the authentic peaceful march and that was awesome because these will be our future leaders. Airport Elementary, we are a winning team, developing scholars through leadership. Airport students, please stand up. Let's give them a round of applause for all of their hard work. We also like to thank Dr. Brittany for her leadership and her support of airport students. Thank you.
Now, Mr. Steve Lawler is here this evening to share the need program that contributes to the overall success of the course of Berkeley. Now PowerPoint of this accountability and updating was shared with Board of Education. But before I start that, I wanted to just do a follow-up from Dr. Daisy mentioned leaving this, might have been the March or April meeting about the centralized, centralizing change, competitive challenge. So I just wanted to give an update to the board. That was the challenge that she had talked about to commemorate the 50th anniversary of the March of Montgomery Selma and that the three high schools were in a competition regarding the 54 days and their reduction in discipline referrals. And so, the students were involved in kind of facilitating that at their school and so each of the three high schools and their spear council groups created, whether it was pledge cards to students at the Ford High School, whether it was the PowerPoint that was put together for the students of the course of Berkeley during advisory, and announcements at the Ford North through their Star News TV studio. And so, the outcome of that, the winner is the course of Berkeley. They had the least amount of increase in referrals for that 54 days. So congratulations to the course of Berkeley. And you would please join us with your spear council, Mr. Lawler, and I'll try to introduce you for your presentation.
Good evening. First, I'd like to find yourself for people loves, or perhaps to give a little wave. And I, I have some great news that's not my part, but I wanted to share with the board and the rest of the art, the teddy's tonight. So, Mr. Swirdon, can you say a phone? Mr. Swirdon is one of our social studies teacher at the post of Berkeley and I just cut back our preliminary USC scores from this semester. And so, this school year for our preliminary numbers, our USC scores have risen from 205 to over 312, which is an unbelievable increase. And Mr. Swirdon is a great part of that. He has great scores, so. The highest score for the post of Berkeley has ever earned on that test, and so we're very proud of our students and our teachers as well. So tonight, I'm going to talk to you a little bit about our post-secondary leadership team. I'm going to warn you, it's not very flashy, but we feel really strongly it's going to do some great things for our students. And I was excited to hear Dr. Clark tell, talk about how to be ready this at the elementary level because we are working on that at the post of Berkeley and of course, they're feeding to us. So, I'm going to talk tonight about again, our post-secondary leadership team. And our post-secondary leadership team is actually a group of counselors, administrators, advisors, and their, their goal is to get kids ready for post-high school experiences, whether that's a job, career, a college, technical school, all those things. So, the state, our CCR standards, which we get points for, breaks in five, are based a lot on, on those criteria. And so, it's really important for not only our school, but obviously for our kids. Our goal is that any kid who comes out of post of Berkeley has the ability to reach their dreams, no matter what that dream is. And so, it's really important for us to, to be able to do that. So this is our team. It is Mrs. Clark, Mrs. Clark, who teaches our dental courses, Miss Dean, Miss Porter, Mr. Simmons, who's our MCAC advisor, who works a lot on their college, kids on college, is studying in this outcome. So they work really hard. They get their full goal is to make sure that kids' dreams come true. And so, we've, we've changed the way, we've asked our teachers to change some of the things that they're doing at the post of Berkeley because we haven't been as successful as we wanted to. And again, our focus is on kids. We want every student to be able to do what their dreams is. So last year, we post of Berkeley didn't earn a lot of points out of 30 on the CCR standards pertaining to national standardized test, little credit placement, and a percent of graduates who attend post-secondary education. So our, again, our goal is to address those areas specifically and with a lot of focus so our kids can, can, can again, be what they want to be. So we weren't happy with our ratings and more importantly, we were, we didn't feel like we were preparing our students well enough to be successful. So it has been our focus this year. And we're going to do that by basically taking care of three things. So I'm going to talk a little bit about Missouri Connections, increasing our career technology education participation, and our ACT prep, all of those that do let things determine our score on exit. So Missouri Connections is an online repository and a resource that allows students to explore their interests, careers, and career clusters, and is the homeowner for your high school plan. The program also has various activities and lessons to teach personal electronics and soft skills, everything from finding out what you like, what you might want to be as an adult, and then how to attain that goal. So in eighth grade, the middle schools go through, they do some work on Missouri Connections, and a student gets a portfolio. And that portfolio stays with them through the high school years. And so, it's really important that they, that they're hard to do those things in, in middle school to get an idea of what they're interested in so that when we start setting up courses for the high school, we can guide them in the right direction. So in the past, we've had, a lot of times, kids would, would jump from career, 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 and we, we love that they're, you know, perusing what's available, but at some point, we do want them to make a decision and stay in the track because it helps them be prepared for what they want to do later and it also helps us with our incentivized course. So Missouri Connections, this is our plan for next year. So in ninth grade, we'll work on their courage, per investment interest inventory, and they'll develop their four-year plan. The thing is, the conversations that we're having with kids is that your, your plan can change. So we're asking you to make a plan in ninth grade and then we're going to revisit it every year, but if you don't have a plan, you're kind of wandering around and you don't know exactly what you're going to do. So having that goal in mind is really important for our kids, and so we're going to help them with that. In 10th grade, they would do a service project, they would work on their leadership skills, and also taking ASVAB test, which is a military placement test. And not that they want to funnel kids to the, to the military necessarily, but it's a, it gives us an insight into their achievement level. It also gives them some practice taking a standardized test and some of our students obviously if you want to look at the military career. In 11th grade, our kids take the ACT test, they research the post-secondary options that relate to their personal plan to study. In 12th grade, they, they retake the ACT or the ASVAB, that kind of stuff. So our goal is to, to find out where kids are and then help them improve. Oftentimes in high school, a student will take the ACT and they'll go to school and they'll say, hey, I want to take the ACT again. And I said, well, why you want to take the ACT again? Why don't you hire a store? But then they know they still have a plan to get the higher score that they gave, that they get, and they might score below. So one of the things specifically that we're doing at the post of Berkeley is getting them interested in the tracks for CTE and then we're going to use an ACT plan. So students need to earn three credit hours to be completers in their career track and many of our kids just fall short of that. And so again, by having a four-year plan, it's going to be really important because it, it gives them a goal to reach, it gives them a, a plan to meet that. So we start early. So our eighth grade paranoid, when two years in, when parents and students came to NSB, we were already pushing their career clusters. So we were explaining to them what the tracks were, that they needed to complete three courses in it, giving them the opportunity to see what the courses were about, but also tying it to a, a career. So it's not just family consumer science, it's family consumer science because I want to be a chef, I want to be in a hotel management, especially those types of things. So we have a great PLTW courses at the post of Berkeley, so we have used for that. So that's computer engineering, those things, get kids into manufacturing. And so, I want to spend a little time about, just talking about our ACT school-wide prep. So we do a few things to get kids ready for the ACT test. I was having a conversation with my wife, actually, about ACT. When we took ACT, we didn't have to do writing. And now it's ACT plus writing. You take the ACT test, ACT test, and then again, there's a big writing prompt. So what we do for, with our kids, we do cold writes. So twice a year, we just sit them down in the classroom, give them a topic, and they have to start writing on it. So it's very basic type. There's a certain number of minutes that you have to do it, so getting them to practice that is really important. Also, you've heard before, of course, about our secondary writing expectations. So increasing the writing in all of our classrooms is what we're doing at the post of Berkeley and we know that will reach those benefits on our ACT course. The John Mayr test prep is something new this year. We actually used some of our school improvement grant money to purchase this. So every junior went through a 12-session prep, press test session for ACT, before we took ACT in April. So we're really excited to get those scores back and see if that made a difference. If it does, we'll expand upon it next year to really make sure that kids are, are prepared for that. And then of course, we use our purpose in our ASVAB as a, as a catch-up tool again. So if kids don't get along with ACT, we can give them the other tests and prepare them for it till end of the course. So our desired outcomes that we know are going to end up in kids being more successful in their futures is that all students will have a career plan by January for their freshman year and then they'll reevaluate, reevaluate it every year. Fifty percent of the students in NSB will complete a CTE track by graduation. Someone asked me why, why don't I only 50%? Some of our students are in such a college track that we don't want to, we don't want them coming out of college courses to take the CTE courses. So we're going to, there's multiple ways that we want kids to be successful. If kids are really on the college track, we're going to, we're going to help them with that. If they're not and they want to get into a trade or a career, then we're going to help them with that also. Also, our, our most desired outcome this year is to increase our ACT scores. We want a greater percentage of students above the national average, but also we want a higher all-school average because all kids take the ACT test as tutors. So our goal and what our commitment to our kids is, students attending the post of Berkeley will be prepared for a college and career by graduation. That's our task, that's what, that's what the building is here for, our self people. So we're excited about making some changes to make and ensure that our students are successful no matter what they choose to do after the high school's over. Thank you.
I would tell you, everyone, from PAC Elementary, we do learning and development. I'd like you to do three reasons. One, exposure. Two, the thanks. And three, to share the good news. I'll start with sharing the good news. As you're talking with Steve Weeks from the owners and heirs, we found out that we're standing at 1,867 owners, students in the first of course of school this year. When I have proposed for the three schools where we do most of our work, Airport School, Duchesne, and Walden Grove, in our budget this year, PAC has allocated 10,000 dollars each to each one of those schools to help with such things as electricity, gas, rent, food stocks, those basic material needs, mortgage. Already this year so far, in those three schools, we have spent $13,000. But that does not have anything to do with the $10,000 that we're allocating for each one of those schools in our budget. That's one of the good news story. The second good news story is that I spent two hours yesterday evening with the board in revenue from engineering and they agreed to come onboard and help us to take our robotics to 60 kids to Washington DC next year in the week of science and technology. They're starting June 1 with three technicians from the robotics team and they will be with us the whole summer at Central. Every day, they will have somebody there in the morning. We figured out that our kids do robotics best in the morning. And so, they're going to take their team and they have agreed that they would change their hours at work to come work for us. That's the good news. I'd like to tell you thanks to a bunch of people that have helped us throughout the year. And I don't want to embarrass anybody, but I want to talk to Scott. Scott, thank you so much for coming and doing what you're doing. I thank you, Brian, for your prayers. Thank you, Courtney, for stepping up, for Rob, for being here, Lesley for being here. I thank you so much, Dr. Perry, for all that you do. Paul, you've been with the PDG all good. Larry, I couldn't have done it without you. I want to give a great thanks to Miss Reilly, who answered every one of my calls. I call a lot and every one. I want to talk about some people out here in the audience. There's a guy out here that I can expect for him to call me back within 24 hours. Thank you so much. Laura Jusick, I like to call her the big hand, but that's not a good name, so I'm just going to call her Mrs. Jusick, another one that stands tall for PAC every time. I want to give thanks for, I'm kind of reminded of a story out of your body, it's in a book of movement. Jesus heals 10 veterans, one comes back and says, thank you. Jesus said, did I heal 10? In other words, we're the other nine. I don't want to be in that other nine category, so I come to tell you thanks. We have been exposing our team to different things, Jefferson City, Farmington, everywhere where there's a competition, they have been. And we're teaching them public speaking, so I want to give them the opportunity to say a few words. I know, I share here, but she's one of the children, isn't she? She's one of the children that, out of this little box, out of this box, now we're having some of the pieces. You did this. We can thank this for what the world may come back now. We can thank you about the shit. She's one of that issue.
My name is Shaya Michaels and I would like to thank all the supporters of the robotics program, especially Miss Tony for giving me this opportunity to be in the robotics program. I can tell everyone one thing, that Miss Tony always has more opportunities for me since I joined the robotics competition or visiting Jefferson City. Before I met this son, I had never gotten this many opportunities. I have learned many things such as teamwork, leadership, problem solving, that you never do about and have a bill of fault and a program of ROLAB. Finally, I'd like to thank my robotics team and my business friends, Asia and Arissa, for giving me interest in this program in the first place. I would like to encourage more students to be involved in the robotics program. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Arissa Robson from Duchesne Elementary and I want to first thank Miss Tony for this opportunity. At robotics, we don't just learn how to build a program or less. We learn teamwork, peace, leadership, how to solve our problems, and respect. I would also want to thank my teammates, Adrian, Shaya, for helping me and being great teamwork workers. I have learned a lot from Miss Tony, the robotics program, I call UPE3s and NXTs. I am glad that I have achieved what Miss Tony has taught me. Thank you.
That's wonderful. I have nothing to do with what they do, but if I needed a team, I think I'd But if I needed a team, I think I'd get them. We have at the end of every session, a little ditty that we do, and I'd like to do it now. I usually need a trouble, but I think they got it. Good job, good job. Good job, good job. G O D J O B. Good job, good job. You know you did a good job, so say you did a good job. Good job, good job. Thank you so much.
Readers' Writers Program Network, Dr. Blant. Keep my glasses.
Good evening again. I am coming for you to request approval for the Readers' Writers Workshop Network this summer. We are implementing balanced literacy model. And the piece of that is the Readers' Workshop model. Teachers have already received extensive training in Writers' Workshop, but we have not had the opportunity yet for Readers' Workshop. So in order to fully implement balanced literacy, it's important for teachers to implement Readers' and Writers' Workshop. This professional development will address Readers' Workshop as teachers have already been engaged in Writers' Workshop. Teachers will receive a deeper understanding of the reading process, comprehension, fluency, and teaching methods. Teachers College is a research organization who develops ideas and methods that are foundational to literacy instruction. The professional development will support principals, instructional coaches, and teachers. The cost is $20,000 funded through Title II Funds. And the hope is we will implement the trainer, trainers model. And so teachers will receive the training, and they go back to schools and continue to support other teachers.
Need a motion to accept the Readers' Writers Project.
I move that we accept the Reader's Project as network.
Second. Move by Mrs. Dr. Thurman and second by Mr. Shabow. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Beals, student code of conduct, second reading.
Good evening. The Students' Expectation Committee has already completed all of its work, and we are waiting for your approval. So do I. And if there are any questions, I'd like to be entertained.
Need a motion to accept the student code of conduct for two minutes of fifteen, sixteen.
So moved. Second.
And moved by Mr. Ebert, second by Mr. Brown. Any discussion or questions for Mr. Beal? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Revised Policy 2024 Graduation Requirements. Mr. Paul Woods.
The administration is recommending a revision to Policy 2024 Graduation Requirements due to House Bill 1189 in the revised Reserve Department Developmentary Secondary Education Graduation Requirements for Students in Reserve Department Schools Handbook. A copy of the revised policy language, House Bill 1189, in the Desi Graduation Handbook is provided to the Board of Education. And I'd like to note that this policy was included on our list of negotiations for policy revision, but at the time of our negotiations, we were not able to bring forth language to the table for discussions. We were waiting on Desi to revise the graduation handbook, which they did. And so I have shared the policy language with the F M A A. They can take off on that policy. And so we just need to finish the word for final approval.
Need a motion to accept provisions to Policy 2024.
I move we accept the revised Policy 2024 Graduation. Where goes? Second.
And moved by Mr. Shabow, and second by Dr. Thurman to accept the provisions to Policy 2024 Graduation Requirements. Any discussions or questions for Mr. Woods?
Does this begin next year, correct?
Correct. The graduation class of 2016, or any students who would like to use the substitution for the projected live classes for other core credits? Thank you very much.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Brown Ebel, new bridges apparently.
Good evening. It's time to talk about the McCorne North Pedestrian Bridge project. Two pedestrian bridges, one at each level, that connects two of their buildings to McCorne North are needed to replace them due to deterioration of concrete and several areas of report exhibit showing in rusting. The project will involve the demolition of those two bridges and construction of the new bridges, which will be made of steel-beam system and concrete decked with aluminum guardrails. Design specifications were prepared by our contract engineer and architectural firm. The bid information and specifications were advertised in two papers and on our district website. They were also available at the required pre-bid conference and walkthrough. At that pre-bid conference, twelve vendors attended, and four vendors submitted a bid at the end. The lowest and most responsible bid was submitted by Cozy Wagner Incorporated in the amount of $301,576. I've worked with this contractor in the past in my past career, and they're very reliable and great work there around the St. Louis area. They also use union labors and subcontractors, and our contract engineer checked their references and recommends them as the lowest and most responsible bid. If approved, the work will begin at the end of the school year and will be completed before the beginning of the new school year. Based on this information, we ask the Board to award the contractor, Cozy Wagner Incorporated, an amount of $301,576.
Need a motion to accept the proposal?
I second.
And moved by Dr. Thurman, and second by Mr. Brown. Any questions?
What was the height of the nerve? Was it close? Yeah, they're all within about twenty percent. Over the.
Is it going to look nice?
It'll look nice.
Would I, I should report courage around the.
It'll be going over your favorite fencing area with a generator.
Can they drop something off the fence around the generator so it can be rebuilt?
We could do that.
All right, now, any further discussion? See, none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign.
Here you go. Thank you.
Close bets. I see you again for any questions.
This one won't spend any money. I don't do that often. The project Clear Program, which is a, is handed by MSD, they requested a distribution agreement for work that is needed to be done on our south New Forest Road, which is to Shaya Elementary School. MSD has to act to ensure that all stormwater and sanitary water are properly directed and subtly directed, not commingling assistance for health and safety. There are both municipal and MSD ordinances that address these issues of downspouts, sometimes shower drains under sewer-related matters. In numerous locations throughout St. Louis area, there are improper connections, especially with stormwater outlets being connected to sanitary sewer outlets. One of these exists in our district property at Shaya Elementary School. We recently had done work that, to vote on our own, to redirect that. So this is a program where we got free by MSD. This program will correct the problem and do all the related work, including connecting or repairing any damage to our property when work is done. In this case, they would replace a sanitary clean-out cap that is improperly connected and involves new pipe, a cap, and some concrete working. In the agreement, they state that they will restore pavement, retain walls, and grass areas affected by the project. I spoke with the project manager personally, and they will work around our schedule to ensure no school or district, business will be disrupted for this project. There will be no cost to the district for this project unless we don't sign the agreement. So based on this information, I'm asking the Board to approve and renew to the disconnect agreement with MSD.
I, I sub move that we accept the agreement.
Second. And moved by Mr. Shabow, and second by Mr. Ebert to accept the agreement. They've been stated, correct, that issue we have on proper. Any further discussion?
Do we have the summer grants?
Not that I'm aware of. This, in this, like I said, wouldn't, won't affect any of our school businesses. Someone outside, and even if we have something going on, it shouldn't affect it. They will work around when they're ready to, like, check our schedule first, work around if they've already made that agreement.
I'm just curious. I love price. Why?
It's this new program, this project Clear Program, and they're, they're, she grants other money to assist. So because it's also affects personal property, so a lot of citizens are having to do this on their own. So this project helps them to get that kind of money to repair the, the expenses.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Drusick, make resolution.
Good evening, everyone. The Missouri school law requires that all checks that are drawn and was strictly signed by the president and the treasurer of the board. We have had a reorganization since April. And so we are asking that the Board adopt a new resolution that we can direct signatures onto the checks and then facilitate when I've written the signed checks that go through our computer so that you don't have to sit and sign all those checks by hand. So the administration's requesting that the Board adopt a new resolution so that we can hand that signature on transfer of the checks.
Need a motion?
I second.
And moved by Dr. Thurman, and second by Mr. Shabow to create a new bank resolution. All those, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
MSBA Annual Membership Dues. Approval to continue MSBA membership during 2015-16 school year is required. The cost is $12,3734. Need a motion to?
I move that we renew our membership with MSBA.
Second. And moved by Mr. Shabow, and second by Mr. Ebert to renew our membership with MSBA. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Very good. NSBA is a great organization, does a lot of good work for us. NSBA Annual Membership Dues. Approval to continue NSBA membership during 2015 school year is required. The cost is $5,335. Need a motion to accept the dues. Is there a second?
I second.
And it's been moved by Mrs. Dr. Thurman and second by Dr. Perez. Any discussion?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. $5,300, thirty, $5,300. What do we get?
We get a presence in DC. They do a lot of lobbying on our behalf as educators. Helps support that. It's one function.
Okay. Any other questions?
Obviously, they're on the NSBA conference. The publications that you receive in the mail as members of NSBA, it's, it's NSBA on, on the national level?
Well, is it possible that we can table this until next month?
Just need a moment.
Somebody want to give me a motion? Awesome. So I've given you the motion. I never quite understand that. Do I have to consider a second to the motion?
I'll second. The move that we table this until next month, second by Mr. Ebert.
My discussion is going to be, going to be due in March.
All those, any further discussion on table? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion's been tabled until next month. Suspension of Policy 4051. I sort of.
The Board made to suspend House 4051 requirement at all meetings the Board developed within the district for the application of House 4044, suspension of policies by the Board of Education. We'll need an executive session to discuss personnel matters according to 610.021.3 on Sunday, May 17, 2015, at St. Charles Media Arena between the hours of 3:00 PM and 3:45 PM. And if we have personnel-related matters, 2:45. But we need to be able to suspend the policy.
For those unaware of the policy, well, I need a motion first.
I move we suspend the policy.
Second. And moved by Mr. Shabow, and second by Mr. Ebert. The policy is regards to holding school board meetings within the district. St. Charles Family Green is not within the district. And we're only holding a, a executive session, it's not open to the public. As long as we suspend the rule about having meetings within the district, we can, we can be at the family arena while we're waiting for the, the change between graduation.
This is, this is to avoid having to wait until the June board meeting for those related matters?
And, and the Board is there anyway, so we'll make our, our time productive. Any further discussion?
My, my only, which, my only concern is, do we have to list the? I mean, what I'm saying is, is three, 3:45 bothers me because, you know, with graduations, things are so unpredictable. I mean, can, can we just, like, list it all day, and whenever we get to do it, we do it?
That's the first break in between two, it can be extended to the afternoon.
Oh, okay. So we can extend it all the way? That's, I just want some flexibility. That's obvious. Graduation, my goodness.
It would be risky to.
And it's between the first and second graduation, we need to extend it.
That's what you were thinking about? Yeah, I was just that, that. It's like, I hate to run off the stage while we got these teenagers all excited about graduating.
Certainly, certainly this board has never run long to bring the discussion something. So, you know, I, I think 15 minutes is probably long enough. Anyway, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor suspending policy number 4051? Say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion carries. Need a motion to go into executive session?
I move to go into, to executive session.
Second. And moved by Dr. Thurman, and second by Mr. Ebert to go into executive session. Ms. Fox, have the call roll.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Thank you for coming, man.